Last week, we unveiled a new, and it's a pretty simple initiative, to our leadership, our staff, families, and communities. Some of you may have seen this in recent days on our social media. It's called gratitude grams, and it provides individuals an opportunity to thank someone in LPS for a job well done. We frankly have been overwhelmed by the response and have received dozens submitted in just a few days since its introduction. Tonight, as we close out the semester on Friday, I thought it would be fitting if I would share just a few of these that have been submitted that have not been posted on our social media. This one is to all LPS staff. Liberty has the best teachers and staff. I have two students at North and one at Heritage, and I can always turn to those working with my students to help them through rough patches. Thank you, thank you, thank you for always supporting and caring for all these students and their families. That was from B. Mason. This one is to Lilian Schumacher and Shoal Creek staff. As a grandparent of elementary students who love school, I sincerely appreciate your professionalism, commitment, and willingness to help to bring some sense of normalcy, stability, safety, and joy of learning to their lives. You make such a difference. Thank you to everyone in our school district for working hard to keep the schools open. Tax dollars well spent. To the Liberty Virtual School team, I appreciate the intentional planning, time, effort, and commitment that the Liberty Public School District has put into the virtual school option this year. The preparation and dedication to the students show in the intentional scheduling on all education platforms. Also, the patience and dedication of the teachers to work seamlessly with the students is greatly appreciated in all the work they do day in and day out. That was from Jennifer B. And to the maintenance facilities, grounds, and custodial staff, I am so thankful for the work you put in each and every day, and more recently, the above and beyond work done to prepare our schools and district for return to learn. From creating shields to room preparation, moving furniture here to there and sometimes back to here, all while cleaning and disinfecting and measuring six feet and so much more. Our buildings look beautiful. Thank you. That from Jennifer S. And then finally, I thought I would add this. It's short but meaningful. This to the Liberty Public Schools Board of Education. Thank you to the Board of Education. These individuals worked tirelessly behind the scenes to provide a great environment for our kids. Thanks for all you do. From Michelle Wilson. So again, as I mentioned as I introduced this, such a simple concept, but I think in a world right now with so much noise and negativity, I have the pleasure to be and the honor to be able to open up that portal each morning, and I've spent minute, you know, five minutes every morning getting ready, getting the opportunity to start my day with that, which is pretty awesome. And this has been obviously a challenging semester, but going through and reading these dozens each and every day, there's so, so much good going on. So we'll continue to share those in our social media outlets in the days and weeks to come, probably over the winter vacation, but just wanted to take a moment to share a few of those with you this evening. So that concludes honoring excellence for tonight. Hope everyone has a great holiday.
Thank you, Dallas. Public comment. Mr. Rosecrans, do you have any comments? We don't have any comment tonight, so. Move us on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Do we have a motion to approve?
I believe the board approved consent agenda items 4.01 through 4.07.
Thank you.
Second.
Senator.
A.J.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Kim Marie.
Yes.
Mushin Harris.
All right. Moving on to reports in the administration. Dr. Tucker.
We're going to begin with 5.01 in our Innovation and Learning Department. So we're going to ask Dr. Westfall to provide additional items tied to their update this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. We just have a couple of highlights for you tonight and want to theme them with the holiday season of gratitude and celebration. So our first one is with gratitude, we want to share the report that we received from Colleen Jones for the tremendous success that we had in our real-world learning opportunities this semester with a huge shout out to our business partners because they offered so many opportunities for our students to still get their internship times. And so we just wanted to make sure that we shared our gratefulness to the business partners of Liberty Public Schools. The second one is a celebration, and that is despite all the different constraints that were placed on our Fine Arts Department, we were able to provide an amazing season of concerts and theater. And so if you have not yet seen the live stream videos that were captured on LPS53.org backslash or forward slash, sorry, Fine Arts, you'll see that with a huge shout out to our directors, Aaron Money and Matt Allison.
Jeanette.
And then.
Sorry, I just have one comment about that.
Sure.
Our family actually had family watching in three other states.
Very cool.
It was amazing.
And weren't they great?
It was really cool.
Yeah. I mean, I know so many people with, from NAS Media to our technology department were involved in that, and they just did so many things. And our kids' experiences were exponential out of that transition, but they're just so great. Like it just, if you want your soul warmed in that, just watch those.
It was great. Thank you.
And then just to lead off of what Dallas had, we have a little gratitude gram of our own, just from Dr. Moore and from me, all of our directors and the building leaders of Innovation and Learning, we thank the Board of Education for trusting us and for leaning into our decisions and for making sure that we put our students first in all of our decisions and the leadership decisions that we had to make. We just honor our superintendent for all the things that we've all gone through. With that, we want you to know we appreciate you and happy holidays.
Hard to ask if there's any questions. Do you have any questions for Dr. Westfall before we let her sit down?
I feel like this might be a theme tonight, this morning here right now.
No, thank you, Dr. Westfall. You're good. So I appreciate that. Appreciate your expression of gratitude as well.
Well said.
Next up then, 5.02, Dr. Andrea Dixon-Sehorn in the Office of Equity. I will say this, that she will be famous tomorrow as the coffee with the community is pushed out. So she's had a full day finishing up that project. So Dr. Dixon-Sehorn, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. It is really hard to follow, but I just want to say, Jeanette may not have heard him, but I said that is so not fair. And then I have to own up to something, Kim Marie. Somehow the letter E in your name got dropped off in this list of names of people that I was going to share here that will be part of our district cohort as part of the Equity and Schools cohort. So that is completely on me. I do know how to spell your name.
Because it's spelled all different ways all the time.
All right. So I just wanted to just bring attention to just really three big things that were in my report, and they're under the departmental goals. And one of them is just sharing with you the names of those individuals that will be a part of the Equity and Schools cohort, which is sponsored by the Kaufman Foundation. And I think I put this in my weekly update, but the Kaufman Foundation is investing, they're investing a lot of money in those school districts that are participating in this cohort at $10,000 per district. And so there are 10 districts in this first cohort, and we're so pleased and honored to be a part of this. And then it will be facilitated by beloved community. We've had that information available to you to read in advance, but very pleased to announce that Kim Marie will be a part of the cohort, Dr. Tucker, myself, Dr. Jessica Meisenheimer as our Director of Special Programs, Dr. Dewayne Smith as our Compliance Officer, Mr. Jeremy Bratton, Middle School Principal. And then we have two community representatives that also serve on the district's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee as led by Dr. Tucker, and that would be Mr. and Mrs. Jordan Hollinsburg. So very excited about that. The first session will get underway January the 25th by way of an orientation and then also preparing us to conduct our own equity audit using the tools and resources that they have available. So in other words, when we come back from winter vacation, we are literally rolling up our sleeves and we're getting to work. This is an eight-month-long endeavor, so it's going to be labor-intensive, immersive, but we believe will be worth the experience for us as it builds capacity in all of us as part of the cohort to lead equity here at Liberty Public Schools. Also, oh, heard some music. That was nice. Also wanted to call attention to the Equity Action Planning Sessions that have been underway for really about the past month and a half at the school leadership level, at the director level, and then within the department level for Human Resources, Operations, and Communications, which is really just Dallas, but he carries a big stick in terms of being overseeing that particular office. So that means that every school leader has a plan. Every director in the academic round has a plan, and then the HR department has a collective plan, Operations Department has a collective plan, and then Dallas has a plan for the Communications Office. These plans, I just kind of did a quick scan today, kind of just a brief analysis. I'll give you just an overview. Of the roughly 30, 31 plans, 37% of them, that's about 11 of them, address professional learning. That means that these leaders, these equity leaders, the capacity we have right here in Liberty Public Schools, identified by way of the equity talk sessions that we had as part of the Office of Equity's entry planning process, identified on their own the need for professional learning, whether it's cultural sensitivity, cultural awareness, unconscious bias. These are the focus areas that they've identified for their teams, and they're readily using resources that we already have available to make that happen for this year. Okay? Roughly 20% of the plans, and this is more so on the school level, but there are a few departments that are addressing this area of concern, and that is this idea of the sense of belonging and creating a culture of inclusion for our students and families. Another 13%, equally split between taking a deeper dive at the SCL, social-emotional learning data points around the MTSS process, multi-tiered systems of support for students, and panorama data. Again, looking at data pieces we already have access to, right, to make equity happen for our students. Another 13% are looking at equitable access to the educational opportunities and learning experiences that currently are afforded to students, and we have, particularly at the director level, they're taking a deeper dive and looking at who's in some of these programs and who isn't. Okay? And then we have roughly 7% looking at discipline practices, taking a deeper dive in terms of analysis. Okay? And then another 7% looking at diverse representation in terms of experiences that our staff and students are having, and then workforce development is closely related to that. So just wanted to share that as a highlight. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on is this idea of we're going to, and this is in partnership with the Innovation and Learning Department, so Dr. Westfall will be my partner there in this endeavor, and that is for second semester, we're already right now, we've put out an email to all LPS staff for those who would like to express an interest in being a part of our LPS Curriculum Task Force. And the task force will just serve a very unique purpose, and that is to help us conduct a curriculum audit, even if it's on a small scale, even if it's just a rough sampling, to determine where diversity and equity inclusion may be missing from our curriculum. And so we're very excited about that. Our, those staff members that are interested have until tomorrow to put their name in the hat, and then we'll undergo a selection process to determine who will be part of that project, and we're very, very excited about getting the ball rolling in the area of curriculum. So those were the highlights I wanted to share for this evening. If there are any questions or concerns, I'll be happy to entertain those at this time.
Just a brief reminder on the Equity and Schools cohort. What's the thought behind what we're going to, how we're going to learn from that? What are we going to get out of it? I know it's new. I know there's a lot of things not known, but.
Yes. I figured somebody would ask about that. So it's really about capacity building for district leadership in a given school system so they can take it and then make it work for that system, because every school system is different. Okay? So Liberty is vastly different from a Park Hill or a Summit or Kansas City Public Schools. So you're taking the topics that will be addressed. So for example, there'll be a session on racial identity development and intersectionality, and we get to take that and make that a conversation piece here in Liberty, what that looks like for us. There'll be a conversation piece around talent development. The good thing is, we're already working on that piece because we just showcased where we are with Grow Your Own. Doesn't mean there aren't more lessons for us to learn, but again, we get to take it and make it applicable to our workplace culture. Another session will be on intercultural leadership. Again, that's about equity capacity building amongst our own so we can go and really kind of spread the love across the organization. And then, of course, the equity audit is going to be a huge, huge piece of this work. That right there alone is very labor-intensive, and so we'll get to work with across the aisle, across the organization to make that happen.
Perfect. Good. Thank you.
Can I, is it okay if I just add a little bit to that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So it's also capacity building across the region, since we're not the only district. There are multiple districts, so there's the idea that we will all come along together. But I also just wanted, for the board, since I participated in a few of the sessions, it will challenge us, and it will be an opportunity for us in this room to really support the work, and we may need to have some hard conversations about why we're doing it and why it's important and just be ready to talk to our community about it.
Absolutely. I think for us, it could not have come at a better time in terms of just being able to dive in a little bit deeper and have the hard conversations. We've been having some conversations, but I think then creating this network makes it easier because I think there's strength in numbers.
Yep.
So it's going to be a great approach to putting equity into action. Any other thoughts or comments or questions?
Other questions for Dr. Dixon-Sehorn?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up then, 5.03, Ms. Sullivan from the Finance Department.
Good evening. I have two donations to share with you tonight. We had a donation from Sandra Perkins of a Hammer Dulcimer valued at $750 for elementary fine arts teachers to use in class for demonstration and for students interested in learning to play the instrument. We also had a donation from Dean Buford of a cello case and tubos valued at $800 to be added to district inventory for free and reduced students who are in need of a cello to play at school. We'd like to thank Ms. Perkins and Mr. Buford for support of our fine arts program. It was very generous of them. In addition to my report tonight, I wanted to share a few things with you. November appropriation, as you saw, was up to 90%. We're continuing to monitor state revenues. They are trending positively still, so fully anticipating in the DESI Finance Memo this month that we will reach the anticipated level of 94% if not above. So that is still trending to be that way. We'll find out more in January as the revenue picture again becomes clearer every month that we get behind us. As we move more toward budget season, we are actually hearing more about FY22 and the potential tax cut that will be triggered under Senate Bill 509. So the focus is what will that do to FY22 revenues, and since I'm moving into budget season for FY22, that is very much on my radar as well. So we'll continue to provide updates as we hear more on that as well. We did receive our December county payment of property tax this morning, and we've talked a little bit about that every month, and the news continues to be encouraging there. I mean, it was higher than it was a year ago at this time, and it was 1.6% higher, in fact, than at this time last year according, when you compare it to our budget. So that is also encouraging because I feel that property tax revenue collection percentage will be stronger this year than last year, which we did not anticipate the lower percentage collection last year. So seeing it come in higher already this year leaves me encouraged at what we should see with the January collection. So, and that's encouraging news as well. The AFC did review the finances, financial statements this month, and they did not have anything to pass on to you tonight. And I too wanted to express my appreciation for you all, and I hope you all have a very happy holiday season with your families. And that's all I have unless you have any questions for me tonight.
Any questions of Cindy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up then is our Operations Report, 5.04, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Just a few things I wanted to pull out of the reports that are, that are in front of you on Board Docs. First is our, the rapid testing site located over here by Liberty High School is up and running, and we got off to a pretty good start in the, just in terms of the organization and scheduling and kind of moving folks through there fairly quickly. We're testing about 20 or so staff and students per day, so appreciate that, the team that's been, working that program. Also, as has been mentioned, we are actively engaged in planning in and around the vaccine. Anticipate that at some point in the coming month or two, that that will be coming to us for distribution to staff. So certainly more information to come on that front, but just wanted to assure you that we're actively working with the folks on, on what that plan needs to look like. Nutrition Services is getting ready to, for next semester, to expand the Family Meal Kit program that's been really successful thus far, but it's been centralized at Liberty North. Because of the demand for those meal kits, they decided to move it into each elementary school to make it within the neighborhoods as best as possible. So that really did require a little extra work. They knew it was the right thing to do and put together a good plan to put that in place, so that will roll out next semester. I appreciate the team there. As you remember, a couple months ago, y'all authorized the purchase of 10 propane buses. They're, is my understanding, understanding, they're on the way to us now. They should be here within the next week and a half. We anticipate that those buses will be up and working the streets here at the beginning of next semester. So that's, that'll be a good change for us. And last, real quick, on construction update, everything now is scheduled to wrap up ahead of next semester, so right now, primary focus is over at Liberty High School, the atrium, the LMC, and then of course, 800 Wing, 800's Wing is all pretty much wrapping up. We had the chance to get over there today, and there was an event in 800's Wing, and really it looks great. Appreciate the construction team, but really wanted to send a thank, thanks to April Adams, Dr. Adams and her team that, that were really critical in the design of that space and did a great job. So with that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Would only add that we continue to work closely with Clay County Health Departments, Kansas City Health Department in terms of what they are navigating as it relates to guidance and changes, and we'll continue to do that as we roll into the new year. So I appreciate Steve and his team, Kathy Allermeyer, Chris Gabriel, and others that stay close to that on a daily basis, so. All right. Next up, 5.05 then, Dr. Vogelar, our Human Resources Report.
Thank you very much. We've uploaded a report for you. I'll pull a few items out of there. The Human Resources Department right now is getting ready to launch our, our planned year that starts January 1st. We anticipate every year when that happens, you know, there's always a lot of calls that come in just as people are transitioning to new plans, so our team is working heavily on that. Special thanks really to, to my HR department. I have four members of the team right now who, who either, you know, some or all of their job is really kind of set aside to, to deal with COVID-related issues with staff, and, and so they are working tirelessly and have, in a lot of ways, a thankless job, but I do appreciate the work that they do. In the report, you'll notice a blurb in there about the Grow Your Own Teacher Program. That's up and running. Thank you to Dallas for spotlighting that today. The committee's work headed by Dee Rosecrans in partnership with Andrea Dixon-Sehorn and Steering Committee made up of members throughout the district really are prioritizing marketing efforts. The video you saw today is one part of that marketing effort to reach kids in our high schools and even into our middle schools that have a great promise for careers in education to begin to, to kind of turn the needle of interest in that arena. So their marketing efforts are, are in full go. And then the second part of that committee's work is a month-to-month kind of scope and sequence that we're equipping our mentors with, the mentors that are assigned to folks that are in the Grow Your Own program as they graduate and matriculate through college. So it's one thing, you've heard me say this before, it's one thing to woo people into the profession, and it's another thing to just help them matriculate college and then come back to us as teachers. This is a great program full of a lot of promise. It is the fruit, the, the work that's being done is really the fruit of an idea in partnership that goes back to my days working with Andrea Dixon-Sehorn when she was a consultant for the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, trying to tackle the teacher pipeline issue that confronts the state of Missouri to a high degree, and diversity in that teacher pipeline is a high priority. So thank you to Dee, to Andrea, and to the Steering Committee for all the work that they do to really give legs to that idea. The other thing that I wanted to draw out is with regard to Rebecca Fisher's efforts. This is our Wellness Coordinator. January's focus for wellness is going to be on self-care. This has been obviously a high priority in and around our buildings for, for quite some time. Rebecca Fisher looks at a lot of data to assess where the needs are in our district and then designs a wellness campaign to address those needs, and so January's focus is going to be on self-care. And the final thing I wanted to draw your attention to is with regard to our early notification incentive in there. Deadline had indicated 11 people have expressed interest. We have one more participant, so there's 12 now who are taking advantage of that early notification incentive. That, of course, is not an incentive for people to retire, but people who know they are retiring and can give notice, it's an incentive to get them to give notice as early as possible. January 15th is the deadline for that, and it really does set our school system up for success in terms of going after the very best and brightest during the hiring season to fill those positions. There's other items in the report. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, but other than that, that's the HR report for this evening.
Anything for Dr. Vogelar? Okay. Thank you. To segue on something he shared in terms of the month of January being in and around self-care and that focus, we have been having conversations for the last several years for both our students and our staff, the adults in the organization, and the importance of mental health, well-being, and self-care, and would just put an exclamation around that for where we're at presently. We had a leadership team meeting just a couple weeks ago in which Sonya Richardson-Thomas came and spent a good hour with our leadership team talking about strategies and being able to balance the personal and the professional, knowing that in service to others, those two are so intertwined, and then fold in a pandemic on top of that. So we know that those, those are real needs for our students, certainly for our staff, and cannot thank our community enough for their efforts and their work over the course of the last semester, really going back into last year even and over the summer, for getting us to where we're at today. So we, we look back and celebrate all the accomplishments, a lot of the struggles, the challenges, but we, we express appreciation for flexibility, patience, your ideas, and so forth, and we'll continue to lean on that in the coming months as we look to the 2021 school year. Couple of additions as it relates to our update. We did have the opportunity over the last several weeks since really Thanksgiving break to get into schools and visit classrooms at the elementary and the middle and the high school level, and there are phenomenal things happening, as you can imagine. I would also say whether they're face-to-face or in a hybrid model or learning virtual, students are making progress in terms of their academic gains, and it's due in part to the support they have at home, but also want to recognize our teachers and our staff for the tireless effort that they're doing both during the course of the day, after hours, on weekends, face-to-face, on Zoom calls, via email, just all different platforms in support of our nearly 13,000 students pre-K through grades 12. On a side note, taking a look at our state, we continue to have conversations at our state level with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, is how we can not only continue to navigate the pandemic, but also think post-pandemic as to how we emerge out of this. And so one of those areas of focus and of importance is being able to take the lessons learned, to pull those forward specifically in and around assessment and accountability. As of now, we are looking at end-of-state assessments being administered this spring. That creates some challenges that we'll have to walk through, and we'll be working on that as we approach the latter part of the spring semester. But then we also want to take advantage of an opportunity to be able to rethink assessment, rethink accountability, not only the importance of literacy and numeracy, but then also that social-emotional learning piece as well as. Not only the importance of literacy and numeracy, but then also that social emotional learning piece as well as those real-world learning experiences. Things we've been working to advance at the Liberty School District level, wanting to take those to the state level. So we had a lengthy conversation today, uh, with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, uh, the Kaufman Foundation, as well as other districts on what we can do, um, to be able to support that work and think differently as it relates to assessment and accountability. On a similar note, December first was the pre-filing date for legislation and we're seeing a lot of bills come forward um, that have potential to impact public education. And so we're watching that closely and, uh, we'll be continuing to have conversation with our area legislators as the spring legislative session begins in January. Last thing that I would say that was expressed by others as well is thanks to the board, uh, for your work and your energy over the course of the last several months. Uh, we wish everyone a happy holidays, hope you're able to take time, uh, to unwind and enjoy family and friends to whatever extent that looks like in your homes. Uh, but we look forward to starting, uh, a new calendar year in 2021. So. With that said, would certainly entertain any questions from the board.
Thank you. Thank you, Tucker. We'll move on to unfinished business with our board policy revisions.
So these items that are presented to you this evening, you have two sets. The first set under six point oh one is the board policies for your review, uh, this evening for first read. We will bring them back in January for consideration. So if you have questions, uh, or concerns between now and then, please let us know. Our administrative team, cabinet, strategic leadership team will be in the process of diving into those a little more in-depth over the course of the next several weeks. The second set are just administrative, administrative procedures for your review as well. Um, those do not require action, as you all know. So we just present those to you this evening just for informational purposes. We'll see those again in January.
There's a lot of policies here. Are these all from MSBA or there's, is there a theme?
They are all tied to MSBA. Yeah. Yeah. No particular theme. We cover a variety of topics, as you can see by the, the policy, uh, titles.
This is just their next wave of recommendation.
Yeah. Would you add anything to that, Sandra?
It, it is periodically, they will go through and just do a, a group of policies that be updated by legislative actions, best practices. And this is their latest plan.
Plan accordingly in your board prep. Next.
Yes.
Well, a little, a little light reading.
Some light reading. Alright. Six point oh two, the return to learn plan.
So as Dr. Moore is coming up, just to give you a little bit of a backstory here, as you've seen over the course of the semester, um, we've learned a lot and we've adjusted a lot and, uh, we continue to desire to receive feedback from faculty, staff, student staff, uh, parents. And so back in October, we administered a, a pretty wide-scale survey toward the end of the first quarter. Took time to digest not only the qualitative, but quantitative feedback that we received. Um, had in some subsequent meetings and opportunities to connect over the course of those weeks in November. We brought forward some of the themes that we were hearing from our feedback and our survey data as far as some considerations um, as we turn and look to the second semester. It was just a few weeks ago, we were talking about how we might scale up more face-to-face opportunities. And we're continuing to run those scenarios, but we're not at a point of being able to do that widespread. And so what we wanted to do were to provide some revisions to our return to learn plan. Um, we have since solicited, uh, solicited some additional feedback since our study session, um, through a presentation that was provided to our staff about a thirty-minute overview of our return to learn plan. In addition to that, particularly at the secondary level, some onsite visits, uh, for a Q and A opportunity with staff as it relates to what we might see differently during the course of the second semester. So appreciate Steve and the operations team taking a look at that, as well as our innovation and learning department. And wanted to have Dr. Moore kind of hit the highlights as we think about the second semester and updates to our return to learn plan.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. And thank you, board. Um, after the December first meeting where we shared some ideas with you for, um, second semester, we went back and as Dr. Tucker mentioned, we did, um, visit some schools, got some more feedback. And so have a little bit more to share with you this evening. Um, since that December first study session, um, each member of cabinet has visited at least, um, eight schools. Um, each member of cabinet has also talked with teachers, students and administrators during those visits. Um, Dr. Tucker also shared a video message he referenced, um, with staff that was sent out to them on December fourth. And that was about thirty minutes in length that really clarified a lot of the questions that people were having, um, after that December first meeting. And Dr. Tucker, Mr. Anderson and myself, uh, made additional visits to each secondary school during the week of December seventh through eleventh, um, being available for staff who may have questions or want to give us feedback. And this allowed time for us to discuss the return to learn plan shared at the study session. And, um, those meetings, we ranged from having, um, just a couple of people come to, uh, almost the entire staff come. So it just depended, but we got a lot of feedback through those, which I'll share. The feedback that we've received over the last couple of weeks, um, with regard to the elementary level has been, uh, appreciation for the upper, possible opportunity for the early release Wednesdays. Um, there have been some questions regarding, um, changes to IEP minutes, uh, for students in special services. And we're working with, um, our special education department and those, um, teachers to, uh, make sure everybody is comfortable with that. Um, Dr. Westfall hosted an elementary curriculum council meeting where she talked with teachers to let them know about possible changes. Um, and then, um, communication with special services and our peak department about possible changes. Um, at the secondary level, some of the themes that came out of our meetings, just, um, asking for clarification regarding changes to the, uh, five days of learning and wanting to know what that looked like. Dr. Tucker's, uh, video message really helped. Uh, teachers understand that. Um, there were a few more questions. Um, some questions regarding schedules that we need to communicate. We now are at that point where we have a lot of different schedules for secondary. We have an inclement weather schedule. We have a what if my school or my classroom closes for two days? Um, what if my building just closes? And then what if we go fully virtual? So, um, the innovation and learning department has put together a one-page sheet that says, in the event of this, here's what you do. And in the event of this, here's what you do. So, um, that will be going out, um, to families, um, through the buildings in the coming days. Um, concerns were shared regarding bringing back students on virtual Wednesdays and when that would happen. So we shared that we don't, there's not a date for that. That is just, um, down the road when it allows for it. Um, and then there was a desire for early release time for, um, our special programs at the secondary level that are going to school five days a week, which, um, we're asking you to consider this evening. Um, in addition, Dr. Westfall hosted a secondary curriculum council meeting. Uh, and Dr. Westfall and I both, uh, had a meeting with secondary principals just to discuss the hybrid expectations, uh, for students and teachers. So, tonight we are asking, um, for you to consider the early release Wednesdays for our elementary teachers and an early release on virtual Wednesdays for our five-day, um, special education programs. Those would occur on, like, as I mentioned, the virtual Wednesdays. Um, if we have like a four-day week, which is like an A B A B and no Friday or no Monday, we have two days of in-school learning for both groups. So we would not have a virtual Wednesday on those weeks.
Yeah, the other thing I would add is within our strategic plan, this was one of the areas we identified as far as incorporating early release Wednesdays, um, that we really have seen the need to accelerate, um, in part to, um, the, the strain that this has placed on our elementary teachers as far as navigating both face-to-face and virtual students. Kids coming in and out of quarantine or parents electing for a period to have their students in a virtual learning environment, um, because of the virus. Secondly, um, pulling back on professional development experiences for the sake of keeping our teachers in the classroom due to substitute pool shortages, that's been an issue. So you pull that early release into this for second semester, but then as we think about 2021, 2022, um, we'll look to here in a moment and have a conversation in around the calendar and how we might broaden that experience as far as early release days, a little bit deeper into the calendar across pre-K through grade twelve. So.
So with the elementary, I know we had talked about, um, early release students, we've got to find a place for them. Are we making accommodations from a transportation standpoint or some other accommodations to help out? Or is that just, they're coming home when they release the students?
We are, as of right now, um, the plan is that if there's an early release, students would go home tomorrow. If this is approved, we have a plan in place for tomorrow to send out, um, an email to all families at the elementary level to share with us if they need support, um, if they need after-school care. And then, um, uh, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Gabriel are working with, uh, Mr. Kotzer to put something out tomorrow. We're going to try to get that back by Friday, so it'll be quick, so we can kind of judge what people are, um, what families are needing.
Yep.
And then, um, we can kind of get a plan in place to use support at the buildings, also use Kidzone to help those families. Um, and then, um, ideally, the goal would be for families to pick them up, um, at the normal time. But if we have any extreme, you know, situations, that we'll work through those on a case-by-case basis.
And then are we anticipating a similar rate of virtual versus in-person hybrid for a second semester? Have we got a gauge on that?
We've had it, I don't know, um, it kind of flipped back and forth. We've had several people who have switched to, um, virtual, but then we have quite a bit who are coming back face-to-face. So I feel like it's kind of been an even trade. I don't know if you want to speak to that.
We have more elementary returning to the classrooms and it's looking, and the trend is for secondary to move toward virtual. So, that's been, it's about even though in respect to this swap.
Okay.
So still about.
That was a conversation we had this morning even in cabinet as we turned the corner for the new semester in terms of trying to, um, keep social distancing in place and that physical distancing of six feet. Um, we feel pro, we feel pretty good right now, um, that that would not be compromised based on what we're seeing as far as the ask to go one direction or the other. So. Anything else to add, Dr. Westfall?
Just that our population is still about twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five hundred. So.
Okay.
Do those numbers look to be steady for elementary as well? I know they had a number come back and, as you said, they're, they're coming, they're going. Do elementary class sizes look to be about the same size as a?
At face-to-face?
Yes.
Uh, so for the most part, the principals have continued to do a really nice job of letting, um, Dr. Vogelar and I know if their numbers are at a point where they can't. So we've had, um, three or four buildings who've reached out and say, have said based on the numbers for second semester, they need additional support. And so we're in the process right now of hiring either, um, classroom teachers or associate teachers to help out. One building, um, has a classroom of, um, mid twenties and they had, um, a set of triplets enrolled the other day. And so they said, you know, we want to put them together and that is the classroom we want to put them in. That has twenty, that means, you know, there'd be around twenty-eight. Um, and so the principal asked for, um, an additional teacher to help team teach because the person's in two classrooms. Um, and so we're in the process of finding someone to team teach with them so that those students can still be spread out. Um, we had another building said their numbers were getting a little bit higher, um, at the second grade. So we're in the process of hiring a second grade teacher to, um, support that building. So I would, I want to say, we've probably, it's been three or four buildings that have seen more of an increase of the face-to-face. And it said, I don't have the room in a current classroom to put them. So that's, um, a lot, we've had to hire more people.
Well, I'm, sorry, Dr. Moore, thanks to you and the team for going out and proactively getting some feedback from the secondary teachers. And I think that's been helpful as we've kind of reframed things. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Have you had to move any students from their traditional school to other schools as a, to try to keep this balance?
No.
Have not had to do it?
Hasn't that been a thought to do that? What AJ is just asking about?
Um, we have, we have talked about that for students who come in new. Um, but really, we haven't wanted to make that adjustment for anyone, you know, coming in and thinking that they're going to the neighbor school and, you know, neighborhood school that's right down the street and then ha, asking them to go somewhere else and then possibly next year switching them back to that school. So no, we're trying to keep those students at the school that they're designated for and, and finding ways to, to make that work for them.
There, there were some very early scenarios, early, early, like May and June, um, that we, we quickly kind of moved beyond that, that thought through, what would it look like if you moved some grade levels around? Um, and used larger spaces for your smaller kids and, and so forth, because we were contemplating hybrid. Um, but you don't see very many districts that have made that complete shift of grade levels to different buildings, like elementary kids to a high school level and vice versa, um, albeit there was some scenario planning around that early on. So.
So then the expectation is early release will be that first week of school?
Correct.
And everything will be lined out and ready to go?
There will be growing pains. We know that in terms of getting everything, um, squared away and expectations for kids while they're there during that after-care period, getting parents acclimated to it. But then the value that that provides teachers, um, in and around planning, professional development and so forth. It will take time to iron out, certainly.
Our team is, um, has already kind of laid out with Mr. Anderson, um, and his team what, um, we'll get ready to do tomorrow morning if this is approved. And then, um, having some deadlines for Friday for parents to let us know, um, what their needs are. And then our team will come together on Friday and kind of map out. We don't have a lot of time, but, you know, what can we do over the next few days to let families know, um, what we're ready to offer?
And so we have scenarios in place for your hiring needs kids at secondary and elementary?
Mm-hmm. We do.
Okay, I just have one more question. Um, the, the change in Wednesdays for secondary?
Yes.
Um, what was the feedback that we got from teachers about their comfort with being able to handle virtual and, um, in-person at the same time?
The, um, I, initially, I think that most teachers thought that it was going to be that they were going to have to Zoom and face-to-face all hour. And so, um, one of the things we said is that's not what we're asking for anyone. Is we're just asking you to, um, engage students all five days. And that's the expectation. And Dr. Tucker did a nice job, um, of sharing some examples of things that, um, he had seen in walkthroughs and that we'd all seen to say, this is really, this is really what we're, we're wanting to do and many of you are already doing this, so keep that up. Um, but then we also, others said, I'd love to see what some of these people are doing. So our goal is to really showcase what others are doing. And not that you have to, that a student has to Zoom every hour, but that they are engaged somehow in that learning. That's helpful.
Yeah, in fact, we had, we had more examples of teachers coming and saying, well, here's what I'm doing. Does this count? And the answer was great to say, yeah, absolutely. Do more of that. That's awesome. Um, and that I don't think it's realistic, because we've all been on Zoom meetings. I don't think it's realistic to expect a middle or high school student to be in seven hours of Zoom meetings, um, learning that way. Some teachers may elect to do that. Others that we talked to were utilizing technology and flipping their classroom. And that there's the content acquisition piece that might happen on a non-in-person day. And then the application that happens on the in-person day or vice versa. Um, whereas some pe, some teachers had figured it out. We saw some great examples of this. Get similar to an arrangement like this where the teacher's desk is in the middle and the projector is on showcasing those kids that are connecting virtually. And something that we heard from this particular staff person that comes to mind is she found herself paying attention to those kids that are there virtually. Uh, because she knew those kids that were on the periphery face-to-face, you know, she's got access to them. So she found that scale being tipped toward more of those virtual students. And so I think it's showcasing and spotlighting the lessons learned over the semester. And then challenging teachers, you know, if you're doing it, keep up that great work. If there's something more that can be done, it really boils down to engagement. More importantly, students crave their teachers and that access, particularly right now. And we saw that in our data and we were able to show that from our data. Um, and so that's what we really want to try to accomplish as we turn the corner for the new semester. So.
We had so many secondary teachers who also just came and said, thank you for allowing our kids to be in school. We know it's not, you know, we'd like to see them more. Some are still hesitant with, you know, the current, um, cases on the rise of having them on. you know, the current cases on the rise of having them on a Wednesday, but they said they're so thankful that they get to see their students at least two days a week, so we appreciate that.
You ready for motion?
Yep.
I move the board approve the amended return-to-learn plan to include early release on Wednesdays for elementary schools and secondary TLC, best, and ESC programs.
Second.
AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the Edge Micro School proposal.
So this is something we shared with you at our December study session as well, and we have a couple of examples of which we have kind of a school within a school model or a micro-school concept that really kind of springboarded out of what we've done at Epic Elementary. So Heritage Middle School by Design was really our first go at it with the secondary level, and then North Nation by Design, and now we're bringing forward a proposal for the Edge Micro School at Liberty High School. So you've probably seen promotional information coming out in terms of trying to plant that seed with students already and families, because here in January, we begin scheduling for next year. And so wanting to get that concept out there, we've had great interest so far, and wanted to be able to share that we're continuing to have those informational meetings to get both students and parents up to speed on what the Edge Micro School will look like. Think of it as an integrated approach as far as bringing curriculum together around areas that students are interested and passionate about, but then also folding in real-world learning experiences, competency-based approaches, in terms of trying to create something within an existing school that may be a little bit more unique than traditional approaches. And so then can you take those ideas and then expand them into traditional content areas over time? So we want to bring that to you. Again, we saw it at the December study session, so this evening, we would bring that to you for your consideration for beginning in the 2021, 2022 school year. What else would you want to add to that, Dr. Moore?
I would just add that we've had, we have four meetings scheduled to have taken place so far, one being just yesterday, and both of those have been at the max tickets allowed, so we're excited about that. Two more meetings coming in January. Also, when Dr. Tucker, Mr. Anderson, and I went to Discovery Middle School this past week, two of the teachers from Edge were there presenting to the eighth-grade students, and there was a lot of excitement on their part. We've continued to say pending board approval, but we wanted to get it out since it was, we are coming upon enrollment season, but there's a lot of excitement around this, and we're really excited about the possibility. We've been really working hard on this for the last two years, so we appreciate you thinking about this for us.
Questions, comments?
This is super exciting. I'm so pumped. I really, this is great. I share in the excitement of the eighth graders.
It's not just the eighth graders. I'll tell you that I have access to high school kids, and the ones that I know are incredibly excited and will be very disappointed if they don't get to go.
What was exciting to me tonight is before the board meeting, I was watching the Studio Five showcase with Epic and their focus on hunger, and, you know, just talking globally, and I thought, oh, this is a perfect segue into what we're trying to do with this micro school. So I love the, what's going to be possible because of this, and how we can bring it down into the elementary buildings.
I move the board approve the Edge Micro School at Liberty High School.
Second.
AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yay! Excited.
All right, moving on, Seal of Bilinguacy.
Six point oh four then is an extension of another program that is familiar to the board, and that is the expansion of Seal of Bilinguacy Pathways. And we spoke to you about this as well at our study session and earlier this month. Two pieces come to mind, and we shared this, but to reiterate it, it's for those students who perhaps are acquiring a new language or interested in that, not only upon, you know, completion of high school and having attained that, those credits over the course of their four years in high school, performance on an assessment, to be able to qualify for that Seal of Bilinguacy. So that is one path, new language acquisition. The second path is for native speakers who may have moved to Liberty from other countries or other, other parts of the world, who we want to continue to encourage to grow in their native language, as they're learning English, whatever the case may be. So many of those students come to us at a very early age, of which they have a higher risk of losing that native language. And so thus the value of that K-A pathways, to do both, encourage that native speaker in growing toward language acquisition, but then also encouraging new language acquisition for those that perhaps are looking at exploring additional world language. With that said, would recommend that the board consider approval of the K-A Pathways Program tied to the Seal of Bilinguacy. Anything to add from Innovation and Learning? Okay. Unless there are questions from the board.
I move the board approve the Seal of Bilinguacy K-8 Pathways Program.
Second.
AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Right, legislative priorities.
We have some course proposals.
Oh, we do, I'm sorry. Secondary course proposals, sorry.
No, good. So just before the legislative priorities be six point oh five, our secondary course proposals that are submitted this evening for your consideration from our Innovation and Learning Department, specifically tied to our Edge Micro School, courses that center around Computer Hardware, Operating Systems I, and then Cyber Security Essentials and Global Activism in support of the Micro School program that you just approved. So would recommend that to you this evening. Anything to add, Dr. Moore, Dr. Westphal? Okay.
Is the Innovation and Learning show tonight?
That's right.
Questions, comments? Motion?
I move the board approve secondary course proposals, my favorite, Chaos, Computer Hardware, Operating Systems I, Cyber Security Essentials, and Global Activism.
Second.
AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now legislative priorities.
Yeah, thank you. So this is something that is familiar to, to you all as well, in that we've been talking about this the last several weeks. Liberty Public Schools for the last five or six years has been submitting legislative priorities to all of our area legislators, and we've been updating this with the board's help and overview every, every year this time of year in preparation for the spring legislative session. As a reminder, our legislative considerations include key priorities focused on learners, innovative spaces, as well as resources, and then those considerations center around high-quality staff, governance, taxation, economic development incentives, as well as bonding capacity. And so we have time to continue to solicit your feedback in preparation of the spring legislative session. We are in the process still of calling through all of the prefiled legislative information and bills, resolutions, to be able to see if there are additional areas of focus that we want to incorporate into our priorities. We will then, upon approval in January, submit a letter to all of our area legislators on behalf of the district and the board with those legislative priorities. So please take a look at what we have presently in draft form, and then over the course of the next few weeks, we'll continue to watch closely what's coming at us through the legislative proposals, solicit your feedback as we finalize that for communication to legislators in the month of January. So appreciate your feedback along the way.
What is the deadline for us to get feedback and, to get feedback to you, how's that?
Really, just prior to the January board meeting.
Okay.
So we have, we have space or time to be able to do that still, so please feel free to send anything our way.
I will acknowledge that I have been delinquent in this, so I will challenge anyone else who may have been delinquent to give it some energy in the coming weeks. New business, district academic calendar.
Tied to the legislative session, we do not know where that conversation will go this spring session as it relates to flexibility provided to districts and setting calendars and beginning of school dates and so forth. And so we want to, we want to start the conversation around our academic calendars with that. And so as we typically will approve a calendar in the month of January, have our calendar hearing, just know that this year might look different, that's an understatement, but specifically as it relates to the calendar, and that we may approve a calendar, but then depending on what happens in the legislative session, we may come back at the end of the spring semester at some point to be able to say, okay, here's what's different, do we want to make a shift in our calendar? And so I want to preface this conversation with that. Otherwise, you have in front of you two drafts, one of the Liberty Public Schools' calendar for 2021, 2022, and then a second calendar draft for Epic Elementary specifically. These are built upon the current provisions that are set forth within Missouri statute and changes that have occurred within the last year, year and a half, as it relates to start, start and end dates, start dates specifically, and how early we can start school. I want to start by thinking Team Liberty in diving into this with virtual meetings this year, limited opportunity to sit face-to-face in person, but really tackling these issues and folding in some different approaches, including early release. So you'll see that reflected in this calendar, not every single week, but it is embedded over the course of August through May. And that's something that we'll be kind of walking through as well during that spring semester. Couple of highlights, as it relates to the first day of school for the district, that is slated for August 24th. For Epic Elementary, that first day of school would be August 10th. Additionally, Thanksgiving holiday, that week of the 24th and 26th in November. The end of the first semester, primarily for secondary schools, would be December 21st, with our winter vacation commencing on December 22nd through July, or through January 4th. Fast forward to spring, the spring semester with students convening on Thursday, January 6th. March 14th would be our spring break, the week of the 14th through the 18th, schools would be closed. That last day of school for the district being slated for May 27th, and then for Epic Elementary being on June 10th. And then you can see the other pieces that are there listed below as far as kind of the key or the legend for the calendar provided down below. The breakdown of student contact days, first semester, second semester, returning teacher contract days, new teacher contract days are listed there as well. What you don't see is inclusion of inclement weather makeup days, and that we have the opportunity to be able to do that virtually. And so that is unique as we move forward for the 2021, 2022 school year, and some of those experiences learned over the course of this last year, year and a half now, as well as during the course of the pandemic. So that is where it stands as of now, certainly no action needed this evening, but we'll take the next month to be able to provide feedback. We may learn a little bit more over the course of the next month as well, but then set to bring that back in January for your consideration. Anything to add on the calendar side of things, Dr. Vogelar?
No, other than I would echo your appreciation of Team Liberty. We did this via a subcommittee, like Dr. Tucker mentioned with the virtuals. I would comment in conversations with surrounding districts, especially their Northland CAPS districts, they're all in the process of creating their calendars. There could be some fluctuation in the March spring break window, just depending on how things land. The Northland CAPS follows the North Kansas City School District's calendar, and my last conversation with them is they're looking at, at possibly doing spring break the third full week of March. Team Liberty is aware of that fluctuation, and they, you know, their conclusion was that they would be okay either way with its current placement or a week delayed, depending on how things flesh out with the Northland CAPS schools. Obviously, we don't want to create hardship for the kids that participate in the career centers or the Northland CAPS.
Any questions of the board? Otherwise, we'll see this in January with our calendar hearing and those annual pieces that we have for board consideration, so.
Seven point oh two, contracts, purchases, and bids.
We do have several items to bring forward as a recommendation this evening, so we'll turn it over to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. We have three items, all under the policy DJF-1, emergency purchases and actions. The first pertains to Manor Hill, where we had a fairly significant leak on the roof, and so we hired a roofing contractor to come out there and repair that. We also had some roof issues at Donovan that we had to call somebody in to remediate quickly, and that was with weatherproofing technologies. And then last, I did want to stress this last point, using CARESAC dollars, the district did move ahead with a pretty significant purchase under the same policy whereby we did procure 920 HEPA filters to be distributed and put into place into every classroom across the district. Our plan is to have that in place in most classrooms come the start of next semester. And just wanted to share that this is something that we've really been focused a lot on with, with our team and Steve Alterson, his crew, and, and Steve actually has a longstanding partnership with Children's Mercy and their environmental air folks, and so in, in working with them and things that we can do to improve airflow, we've done everything we can, and we did that right out of the gate, kind of just in terms of our systems, which are a little bit older, and they're large, and they're hard to really regulate in a, in a super highly effective way, but they do perform well for us. We keep the systems running pretty regularly. But, but this would be the only next step that we could do practically, and so we were able to kind of work with that CARESAC dollar, procure expedite delivery, we'll expedite install, and really, this is a really significant positive measure on that air filtration part, of which is very important in this time. The other thing just to stress is this is a good investment going forward as well. Those units can stay in those classrooms, will be helpful in the flu season, you know, and just going forward post-pandemic. So we felt it was a prudent expenditure to kind of move forward, again, using those dollars that were available for such expenses. Could be happy to take any questions.
And they're relatively quiet.
Yeah, they are. We, we made sure of that. We had a couple of test, test runs to make sure that they weren't disruptive at all, and I've been assured that they are not.
I move the board approve the listed emergency purchases and agreements.
Second.
AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Board of Education section, legislation and advocacy. Angie?
Bills are being filed. MSBA has sent out a request for board members who are interested in testifying regarding educational bills. They are pretty sure that there is going to be another push to move school board election dates to November, which MSBA opposes, and a push for more vouchers, particularly due to virtual, the virtual things that parents have run across in trying to get tutoring and other private services paid for. Those are their two big things they see at this point in time. So be aware.
Upcoming meetings? We do not have a meeting until January 5th, and then we'll start our 2021 list of meetings. And board remarks.
I had the opportunity to do character trade on Friday, and I actually went to the Chamber of Commerce, but for those of you who haven't gone over yet, be aware, they want to video you. They want a few words that they will cut and splice into a video that goes out on the Chamber website, and it includes the kids. They, it was really cute to have all the kids there. They had a number of parents that were also zooming in. It's fun to do it at the Chamber, because you get to see all the parents, but the children receive a gift bag with about a hundred dollars worth of stuff in it, so that is a great increase.
of stuff in it. So that is a great increase over the amount that has come from the past year, and a number of new vendors. So when you go and do that, um, they caught me when I came in to sign certificates, so just be aware. Don't go in your grubby as clothes if you care about how you look on a video. Um, and she, you know, she'll give you as many pics as you need for doing that, but, um, it's not as much fun as being there, but you still read the little cross, the little pieces, you say congratulations, everybody waves, gives thumbs up, so it is, it is fun in that respect, just not as much fun, and no food. So.
All right, I have a few remarks, and I'm going to read it, and, uh, I'll just warn you that I'll probably get weepy, so, as you would expect with me. Um, so, uh, you'll probably remember at the beginning of the year, I did a video and welcoming staff back, and, um, and I asked for all of us to lean into discomfort for the year, and at the time, um, had no idea what that would mean. So this year has been a difficult year with a lot of discomfort for a lot of people, um, a pretty heavy load for staff, students and families. Um, and I applaud that we were able to get through all of that and finish the semester. No one, no one expected that we would be here today, um, having gone through all semester. But we're all due for a break. On the other hand, uh, some of that discomfort has led to really amazing things happening, and we've had to evolve and learn and implement new practices, thinking, expectations. Dr. Westphal talked about implementing video for fine arts. There have been so many examples of those things that we've had to do differently because of the circumstances, but they're amazing innovations, and I hope that we can learn from those and, um, embrace them and carry them through to whatever comes next. And in my board remarks at the beginning, I also asked for us to extend grace to each other, and that is something that I have seen in tremendous amounts. Grace, support, love in our school community and to our school community. And I hope we can continue those things in the new year as well. Um, so, take a deep breath, thank you to my fellow board members. It has been, um, the hardest year since I've been on the board, Dr. Tucker, everyone on the administrative team, um, every single employee in the system. It's been a tough year, but we've got here together. So I wish everyone a peaceful and restful break and new year, and thank you again.
You're here.
All right. Okay, no actual tears, just crackling. All right, and that leaves us two.
No way to follow that up. I move the board adjourned.
Second.
All right. Sandra?
AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Kind of hard to do the.